Great, I'll call the meeting to order. Let's do a flag salute please. Mr. Giorso, would you leave?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and veritable in justice for all.
Yes, roll call, Chris.
Chairman Garnon.
Here.
Vice Chairman Richardson.
Here.
Commissioner Jensen.
Here.
Commissioner Gorsow.
Here.
And Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
After a review of the previous meeting's minutes, is there a motion or discussion?
No, I'll go ahead and approve. I couldn't see anything that didn't sound right. So I'll go over the approval.
Motion by Judge, or second? I'll second. Second by Judge. By Commissioner Jensen, any discussion? Not all of the paper?
I have to do the, yeah, I have to do the roll call, sorry. Chairman Garnon.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Richardson.
Aye.
Commissioner Jensen.
Aye.
Commissioner Gorsow.
Aye.
And Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Public appearances for California State Law Matters raised by the public will be automatically referred to staff replaced on the next meeting's agenda. Anyone wishing to address the committee at this time will be limited to five minutes on anything that is not already on the agenda. Or anybody would like to address.
So Kim, I'm looking at the computer here. I'm not seeing any hands raised. Um, do you want to give, there is one phone call. Do you want to give them, um, direction on how they would unmute themselves or raise their hand, Kim? You'll have to do it in the mic.
Any members of the public who have a comment, you can just raise your hand using the raise your hand feature in the Zoom meeting or dial star nine on the hotline phone.
Okay. And I see nobody raising hands at all, so I think we're good to go.
Okay, great. Moving on, let's go to the first item tonight, design review. An application by Eric and Robin Witt for a design review permit for replacement of two first-floor windows and sliding glass doors located in 304 Stockton Street. The accessory parcel number is 001-241-0101. This is brought to the tourist and the administrators.
Thank you. Um, so this, um, this meeting, uh, this has come before you guys before, um, Commissioner Gorsow would not have been on the planning commission at the time. Uh, Paula brought this back to you or brought this as a discussion item, um, for you guys to consider. There was some, uh, discussion about the improvements that were proposed and some had already been started. The site is a multifamily residential building, um, and it dates back to the 1950s. Um, it was zoned commercial, um, and it was a multifamily that was a use allowed by right because of when it was built, three zoning ordinance. Um, however, under ordinance 872, we did a lot of rezoning down in that area to, uh, tourist and administrative, the CO zone, which allows for a multifamily. So now it is actually a use allowed by right in that zone. So that has already been addressed. Um, it was presented in 2019, um, and they had done some unpermitted work um, that did require design review. At the time, the fence structure was subject to design review as well as the, uh, sliding doors. There were two windows that had been replaced with sliding doors. The fence, um, we've had numerous meetings with the applicant. Uh, the fence, however, um, has now been lowered and completed and it's no longer subject to building permits, so it is no longer, uh, under design review. Um, however, the two sliding, uh, windows that were replaced by sliding doors, um, those are subject to design review. Um, at the time, um, it is outside of the historic area as designated under design review. Um, there was not, there has not been any historic resource inventory that was completed by the city as part of our inventory, um, nor has one, um, been completed by the applicant. Uh, at that time, you provided direction to staff, um, that they would, needed to get a, um, a use permit for the residential use that, like I said, has already been taken care of by the rezone. Uh, cultural resource study should be completed for the property. Um, exterior renovations must be approved through design review, and that's what's back for you tonight. And then, um, commissioners expressed concerns with the fence design and sliding doors that were installed. And then, um, the applicant was required to obtain all permits. As I said previously, we've met with him several times to talk through the project and what his options are. And the fence, um, he did lower the fence and completed it and, um, with, uh, taking it out of what would require a building permit. Um, and he, um, did contact several, um, companies to talk about doing a historic inventory report. The cost was, um, uh, it was very high. Um, and so, um, he, um, agreed to widen the trim around the sliding doors so that it blended with the trim um, of the, the remaining trim of the windows and it's on the front edge of the building um, to make it blend in better with what's existing there. We've included exterior elevations prior to the improvements and exterior elevation photo of what it looks like today. It is consistent with zoning. It is multifamily. Like we said, it is in the CO now. Um, and, uh, CO is, the general plan, um, is for that area, um, is also consistent, uh, the zoning is consistent. Um, and he is complying with the design review requirements, um, that are required under the code. So we took a look at it, um, and in evaluating the changes to the building, it does appear, um, that several windows have been replaced with metal sliding, some aluminum on the front of the building. Um, and then they also did the addition of a commercial addition that was added to the east side of the building. Um, we are, we, staff is recommending that, um, that we approve the design review application as it stands. Um, we have determined that the, um, the alterations to the existing structure um, are not excessive, would not excessively impair the property's historic, historical significance. Um, and we, um, we are recommending approval, um, to the design review permit. We worked with, um, city attorney on this to just make sure that we were in line with CEQA and they felt that we were in compliance, um, and we do our recommending and we do have, um, the standard conditions attached, um, one through four. Um, and there's one additional one that, the one that's different is a fire, the fire chief has asked that we included a regulation to make sure they comply with all fire code regulations and inspections, including fire extinguisher, and they also, um, wanted to make sure that, uh, she wanted to make sure that they, they didn't impede people's exiting from the sliding doors by putting any kind of fencing that people wouldn't be able to get out of behind that patio area they've created with the fence. So those are the conditions, um, and the findings, and I'll be happy to answer any questions, but again, we are recommending approval.
I got a question for Rochelle. Were the metal windows and the commercial addition and extension of the building, was that all done prior to Mr. Witt's ownership?
Yes, it was. It's included, yeah, any of the other, the only thing that he has done is what you, the sliding doors and the fence on the exterior of the building.
A lot of this is housekeeping, you asked to, asked to.
Yeah, it's cleanup, it's a cleanup project.
I have a question.
I have a question for Rochelle. Did anything come in from, uh, uh, Karen or Bill?
The only comment was the one that I included is your staff report. That's all that was stated. Mm-mm. No, we, we would have provided you any written documentation. That was what came in. I, I will say that Mr. Wood has been, um, very easy to work through, through this part of the process, so, um, and he has tried to work with staff, so.
Any other questions, staff?
And I hope he's on here tonight. We sent everything to him. Um, we have another phone on here, but I, I can't tell you if that's his phone number or not.
The applicant here?
So if you are on the, on your, on the telephone, please hit star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute yourself. And Eric, if you're online, on the meeting, can you please raise your hand? Have you seen him, Kim? I'm not seeing any hands. All I see though is you're asked to unmute on that bottom one. There's another phone call. Nope, that's the same one. It just moved up.
Certainly knew about it.
He did know about it, um, and we sent him the agenda as well. Um, and he had to, oh, wait, maybe that's him. Nope. Eric, is that you on the line? I'm not getting Eric.
Is he gonna have to be present at the meeting and then take action?
The rule has always been in the past that they needed to be present. If you want to make an example, this, we can table this
action or whatever our discussion is going to be. Pick up other pending business.
Yeah, hopefully he'll join. It's a little hard with Zoom. Some people are having problems getting on and stuff, so what I can do is, um, uh, if we want to take a, a recess down the road, maybe I can reach out and see if I can get him on his cellphone.
Finally, we, we're all good with that?
Okay, can we take like a?
Get the opportunity to try and make some, all.
Yeah, if you could take a couple minute recess, I'll run in, give him a call. Yeah, so that way we can keep this one going and we don't have to come back.
Kim, need you mind being?
Nubia, this is Mary Rose. I, I think you wanted to address something. You wanted to wait until Rochelle gets back.
Yes, I can repeat it when she gets back to you, but just for the commission, uh, to know, you can move forward on this item without the applicant. I know it's less than ideal, but you can and it's been devised properly. So normally it's more of a question to make sure that the applicant is aware of the conditions, is okay with them. But otherwise, if they are not here to, uh, voice any concerns, the commission can still move forward and take any action that it desires.
So he's not picking up, but he's been having a lot of medical issues, so.
So you just made a, a.
We can go ahead and take action.
Yeah, if you guys don't, I, cause he does, he's been in and out of the hospital.
Yeah, I, I'm vaguely aware that he's had some.
Yeah, he's had some pretty dramatic health issues lately.
For the sake of, uh, time and efficiency measures, I think we can move ahead with this. Oh, yeah. I'm worried the whole thing's out on the cell phone.
You might tell people one more time, we did pick up another phone call. Just, Kim, you want to tell them how to unmute themselves and everything? Don't you have to talk on your mic?
If you're listening by phone, please hit star nine to unmute yourself if you have a comment. Thank you.
It's start nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute yourself. Eric, is that you by chance? Nope, okay.
Okay, all, um, want to end it with a second special by commissioners. If they have anything to comment on the city. Looks like the lead gentleman's done a much better. But the dialogue that he established with the city a few years ago. Listen, deeper discussion, what's the right to make?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion. Anything I feel that's going to help Sonora look better and be better. Certainly, uh, I would want to go for that and sounds like the gentleman has done everything possible to try to work with the city. Uh, so I'm, I vote for it. I say yes, uh, including the conditions and, uh, all that needs to be included in our.
Want to, you want to make a motion to approve the design review permit?
Yeah.
Very good.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Right, Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Kevin Anderson to approve the design review permit. All for the question? Special, your roll call?
Chairman Garnon.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Richardson.
Yes.
Commissioner Jensen. Commissioner Gorsow.
Yes.
And Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
Very good. And move to the public hearing. First of all, an application by Hazy Bulldog Farms LLC for development agreement to allow Hazy Bulldog Farms LLC to sell medicinal and adult-use cannabis as permitted by state and local law. This location is for 1201 Mono Way in a commercial C-zone. Accessor parcel number is 056190-GO10. Hazy Bulldog Farms LLC currently operates a dispensary at 1243 Mono Way, which will be permanently closed when the 1201 Mono Way location is opened to the public.
Mary Rose, um, our city administrator is going to take the lead on the development agreement portion of this.
Good evening, Commissioner, Vice-Chairman, City Administrator. The item for you is an application by Hazy Bulldog Farms for development agreement, for new development agreement. Well, um, to sell medicinal and adult-use cannabis as permitted by state and local law at a new location of 1201 Mono Way in Sonora. Um, just a little bit of background, if you recall, on November 2nd, the city council adopted ordinance 873, which amended the cannabis business pilot program um, that changed how cannabis dispensaries operate within the city of Sonora. 873 allows the sale of adult-use cannabis, excuse me, in the same manner as medicinal cannabis. On March 15th, 2021, and pursuant to this ordinance 873, Hazy Bulldog expanded their operations to include the sale of adult-use cannabis at their current site. Um, they expanded their operations to include the adult use, um, and we amended that, um, current agreement on March 15th. Currently, at this time, Hazy Bulldog seeks to move their cannabis business operations from the, or, excuse me, the original site um, to 1201 Mono Way. Um, there are a couple of, of additional modifications, um, with this new development agreement that the city has entered into with this applicant, um, as part of this new development agreement. I just want to draw your attention to those, those new, um, modifications, if you will. So currently, at the current site, center of the amendment, um, the applicant pays, um, 10,000 or 5%, excuse me, $10,000 or 5% of gross receipts from operations. This new development agreement will expand what that public benefit fee, what those gross receipts, what the collection of those gross receipts would be. So under the new agreement, it would require Hazy Bulldog to pay 12,500 each month or 7,000, or excuse me, 7 and 1/2% of gross receipts from operations, whichever is higher. So that's additional um, now from the 5% to the 7 and 1/2, or the 10,000 to the 12, um, 12,500. Um, there's also provision that the applicant cannot operate both locations at the same time, so that's in your packet for you. Um, once the new location is open and operating, the amended agreement at the current location ceases to, to operate. So that is part of your packet, that's part of the agreement as well. So those are the two major differences within this new development agreement, obviously, to allow for the expansion into adult-use cannabis, for the new site, um, the increase of the public benefit fee, and also the requirement that he cannot op, they cannot operate both businesses at one time, that once this, uh, new business is open, the old business will, will cease. But at this time, I will entertain any questions on the new development agreement.
Yeah, Mary Rose, uh, with the, the original development agreement that we had to be the former location, except for a two-year period.
Um, I believe, and Nubia, correct me if I'm wrong, but there was not, we put a finite date on the original agreement? I thought there was no finite date on that one.
There, there is a term, I believe, I, I think it's for the same term as the original agreement. Um, so we did set a term in the, in the DA for the expanded use. However, however, under this development agreement for their new location, it will essentially supersede that because the, the whole structure was, we needed to ensure that they are not operational at two locations at any point. So once the new one, uh, goes into effect, then the old one will, um, cease to, to really exist in operation and they need to close, close their doors there.
I understand that, and it's just new development agreement for the same, for two years.
Nubia, on the term?
The term on the new agreement?
Mm-hmm.
Give me one second.
I thought it was a year.
The term is three, it's three years. So that's section 1.7 of the DA. It's a three-year agreement. Unless, and it states unless it's terminated or extended.
And then also there is a provision that they must be operating within six months, um, once this agreement is approved.
Any other questions for staff? Commissioners?
No. No.
They clear on Mary Rose's amendments, the special amendments. All right, very good. Thanks, Mary Rose.
And I know the applicant is on. I see them, so we can.
All right, the applicant here?
Yes, good evening.
Hello, Mr. Muso. Anything you want to add to this? Want to head, lay down for us?
Um, first of all, I want to thank everybody for considering this again. Um, we're really excited about this new location. Um, it's going to make our building much more secure. It's, um, the current place we're in is 550 square feet. We're moving into a building that's 2,600 square feet. So it's almost five, six times the size, um, and it's got brick wall exterior, so really hard to break into. And, um, we just really look forward to meeting all the new standards you guys have for us and, uh, continue to, um, continue to do our sales in a more safe and bigger location for the community.
Well, in essence, really, you're just sliding down the hill, two doors. Everything's pretty much the same except that the fees that you pay and then.
That's exactly right. Um, location, 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 and I guess we're just about the same location. Um, but, uh, yeah, the biggest difference is the quality of construction in the building itself and, um, the size of the building, both a lot better in my opinion.
Hey, commissioners, any questions?
No. Yeah.
Very good. Thanks, Mr. Muso.
Thank you very much.
Um, at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing.
Oh, are we going to limit it to?
Yeah.
Okay, whatever, what do you want to set it at?
Go three minutes. Do I see a little meter?
We do. We have a three-minute meter now, so three minutes would be good.
Rochelle or Kim, you want to go on ahead and pick people randomly here?
Okay.
Whoever's standing in queue to go ahead and address the commission. Well, at the public hearing, anybody that wishes to speak to the commission about this, we'll limit you to three minutes. Please make your comments. Crash, try not to repeat ourselves or anybody else. It's already spoken. We'll go on ahead and start out first.
Okay, and I, Kim, with the thing where you have it, I can't always see. So, again, if you'd like to address, please raise your hand. Um, and if you're muted at, on your end, you need to unmute and then, okay, we have Bob with his hand up. Kim, um, can you unmute him?
There we go. I think I'm unmuted. Okay. So in the agenda packet, Finding C, on page 21 says, "will not be detrimental to the health, safety, and general wel, welfare." I'm wondering how you can find that to be true. I'd like to refer, refer you to the state of Florida Child Abuse Death Review Committee Annual Report, December 2020. It describes the leading causes of child death to be sleep-related infant death, drowning, and inflicted trauma. Digging deeper, page 150 shows substance abuse by child supervisor at time of death. Study this chart and you will find one-third of child deaths are drug-related and a whopping 77% of those deaths are associated with marijuana use. Things like parents too stoned to know they've rolled over on their sleeping child or parents too stoned to close the gate to the swimming pool. Referring next to the state of Texas, Department of Family and Protective Services fiscal year 2018 filed maltreatment fatalities and near fatalities annual report, page 25. Their data shows active drug use by the caregiver in 72% of child deaths. 45 of those deaths involve active marijuana use. Marijuana is the number one drug associated with children's death. Marijuana storefronts are clearly detrimental to the health, safety, and general welfare. And since when is smoking anything good for you? I'm old enough to remember when cigarette smoking was rampant. This county's, this country spent decades beating back the tobacco companies, fighting back against secondhand smoke, and fighting back on the negative health effects of tobacco smoking. Have we learned nothing? Thank you.
We have one minute.
Thank you and please vote no.
Thank you.
So then, we have the phone number ending in the last, uh, four digits, 1626. They have their hand up and it looks like they are unmuted.
Uh, yeah, uh, this is David Peters. Um, I was wondering, uh, we're talking about three years now. I tried to get in while we were discussing it, but couldn't. Uh, but we're talking about three years now and the original one, I think, was for a year. And it was under the cannabis, quote, cannabis business pilot program, uh, which was passed on 11618. Uh, it, as far as I know, there has never been an evaluation of what happened during the cannabis business pilot program. So I don't know how we can continue to extend, uh, these permits when it has never been established whether the pilot program was successful or unsuccessful or had any problems. And I'd like to encourage the planning commission to, uh, like, uh, Bob was talking about, uh, you know, we're, you have the right to protect the city of Sonora, not just rules, but the, uh, atmosphere and what's, uh, good for the people of Sonora. And, uh, you, and when you do that, it seems like the city council tells you, you don't have any business considering that. I would like somebody to address what the plant, the planning commission's job is and what their rights are to make recommendations. Because obviously they're being ignored, ignored occasionally by the city council. I would encourage you not to extend this. We're already got, they're already on the entrance to Sonora. Hopefully they. We're already got, they're already on the entrance to Sonora, hopefully, they would have moved somewhere else. And the consideration of the other one was going to be for the, another entrance to Sonora, which the city council itself said that they didn't want to have these shops at the entrances to Sonora. So that's just what I have to say about this, thank you.
Thank you for comments.
So the next one would be Mel Kirk, he, there you go, Ken, thanks.
Hello. Uh, thank you, yeah, I just noticed on the agenda that you're, the city is going to be increasing the amount of money that the shop needs to pay every month, from 10,000 to 12,000, and increase percentage of sales to 7,500. Those extra fees, I'm sure, are going to get passed along to the cost of the product, which will increase the cost of the product. And by a simple matter of economics, you're going to see the black market expand. Simple way to look at it is if a gallon of gas costs $4 at one gas station, and you can buy gas down the street for $3.50, where are you going to go buy gasoline? I know, I know where I'm going, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody that would like to speak, please raise your hand, if you're on the phone, you can do star nine. And we will be happy to unmute you. One more time, if you would like to address the planning commission, please raise your hand. If you're on the phone, you can do star nine to raise your hand, and star six to unmute yourself. And, Mr. Chairman, I don't see anybody else with their hand raised. Ken, unless I'm missing somebody? Okay.
All right, folks, ladies and gentlemen, very, very much appreciate your feedback, and we'll close the public hearing, bring this back to the commission.
What I'm looking at is a, probably, one of the most regulated businesses within Sonora City limits, could I be wrong about that? But it seems like the agreement that I'm looking at is quite thorough, and I think the staff did an excellent job putting that together. And what we're doing tonight is, is doing the check of this agreement. We're not necessarily in the debate of societal effects of what, what's going to happen here. This is purely meat and potatoes, we're, we're looking at this agreement, that's, that's my perspective on this. You know, I can understand the disagreement with that, but there's also the effects of the prohibition itself, and what that has effects on individuals. So I'm looking at this purely tonight as this agreement. I'm looking at a well-put-together agreement that's been agreed upon with, with the party itself and the city. I think the staff did an excellent job, thank you.
Other comment, and Chris, all clear, let me go, and then ready to go. Even though I'm against this process, I think down the road that science will tell what is good and what is bad with a lot of things, including marijuana. And I have been against this for a long time, but in the spirit of trying to create cooperation nowadays amongst businesses and city councils and planning commissions, I think that we have to realize that cooperation, understanding, and working together is the key to the future of this country, and even in this city. And therefore, I am actually going to say, I will vote for this, it's basically been settled. As I said, I think science is the one that's going to determine how this all comes out. And to put out an olive leaf here to the group, my commissioners, I was against this, we had some discussion, and I know the people out there are very much concerned, but we have to look at the fact that the city, according to what's been said with the planning commission and the council, they are for this. So it's time to look onward to, I'm very interested in seeing, as I, just not to be repetitive, commissions learn to work together, to work in cooperation for the good of everything. So I, for that reason, will say yes to this because I think it's the right thing to do, and we have to cooperate. Enough's been discussed, we don't, there's so many ifs, ands, or buts in this whole thing. The city, again, has decided this is what they want, so I'm not going to fight it anymore. I'm hoping things will work out to the good for everybody, so that's my story, and I'm sticking to it.
Thanks, John. Personally, I feel a little inadequate as a planning commission to get into discussions on substance when I wholeheartedly endorse alcohol establishments downtown, and all the like. Shoot fits, there's a proposal that's made, and it's scrutinized by staff. We're really in a planning and land use mode here. I'm sure that a lot of people have varying opinions on product or whatever, purveying a world. In my capacity personally as a planning commission, finding property suitable, given the ordinance and all the constraints that we put on locations produced this country, I have no problem with this person's right to do that.
Well said.
Unless anybody else wants to weigh in, I'm good for a motion.
Make the motion to approve the development agreement with all conditions listed, I don't think I'll read through.
Actually, you're going to approve, you're going to approve the ordinance, you're going to approve ordinance number 0412-2021A, and that ordinance, I mean, I'm sorry, resolution, the resolution, and that resolution actually, actually approves the ordinance that includes the development agreement. So if you want to go off of the staff recommendation there, right above the, with the findings, it tells, it has the recommendation that you'd be making.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve ordinance number 878.
Resolution, I'm sorry, I'm confusing you, resolution number 0412-2021A. So you're going to be right there. Recommended by planning commission, adopt the attached resolution. Right here.
Okay.
Recommending, or you can say, or you can say, as staff just said.
Motion to approve, as staff just said.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get the wording in there for you, but it's to adopt the resolution. Okay.
Commissioner, I assume you made a motion to approve, oh, resolution number 04-12-2021. Your second? Jensen's seconded, is a discussion. All questions, roll call.
Chairman Garnon?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Gorseau?
Yes.
And Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
All right, move on to item number four. It's an application by Hazy Bulldog Farms LLC for a use permit to allow Hazy Bulldog Farms LLC to sell medicinal and adult-use cannabis permitted by state and local law. This location is for 1201 Mono Way, commercial C-zone. Disessor parcel number is 05619010. Hazy Bulldogs Farms LLC currently operates cannabis dispensary at 1243 Mono Way, which will be permanently closed when the 1201 Mono Way location is opened to the public. That?
Thank you. This one will fall to me, it is a use permit to allow for the sale of adult-use and medicinal cannabis at that 1201 Mono Way location. I'm not going to go into a ton of detail on the background, that has already been done as part of the development agreement. We do find that the use, as allowed in the Sonora Municipal Code, provides for adult-use and medicinal-use cannabis dispensaries within the commercial zone, as long as there is a use permit. It also prohibits the facility from being located within 600 feet of a school, youth center, daycare, church, or park. The proposed location is not within 600 feet from any of these listed uses, and therefore, with the approval of the planning commission, it will be consistent with the municipal code. It is in the heavy, heavy commercial land use designation, and it does provide for a broad range of commercial uses for both residents and visitors and retail facilities. So it is consistent with the general plan. The existing cannabis dispensary sections 8.36.040, the city will allow up to three cannabis dispensaries. Currently, there are two that approve, are approved in the city. One is, is the one that Hazy Bulldog has at 1243, has been stated several times tonight. That will go away upon the opening of the, to the public of 1201 Mono Way. Staff did include that as a condition, that the existing use permit will be revoked at 1243 Mono Way, when the occupancy permit is issued for 1201 Mono Way. So there will still only be two, when this is completed cannabis facilities that have been so far approved in the city. It is, will be located in a new building, this was the old kitchen and bath store. One thing nice about this, it does have a lot more parking than their other location, it is a bigger facility for them as well. We have, you guys have seen these conditions before, these are the, the, we have put a standard set of conditions together for any dispensaries within the city, working with the police department, and the fire department, and administration. So these standard conditions will be applied to every facility, and then we actually add a few that are site-specific. So item three, which we talked about, was a site-specific, which is the revoking of the use permit at 1243. Other than that, the standard conditions for dispensary are included here. I will tell you that we've been working with them, staff has, working with them on the, allowing them to get up and running on the 1243 location, while they're working on the new location. Because as of April 15th, they can sell adult use at their current location. The PD will be out inspecting, and so far, so good with the layout and the way these conditions are coming together for both the city and, and the applicant is working through them. So we, we are pleased on how this is going, there is a lot more conditions than we ever had in the past. I am, I have nothing else for you, unless you have any questions for staff.
Commissioners, anybody have a question? Is good? Mr. Museo, you're up again, would you like to volunteer any new information on this? For the applicant?
Nope, I think pretty much everything has been addressed. I am proud of the new set of standards that they're setting. They clearly show that they've been paying attention. They see our weak points at our current location, and they definitely made us beef those points up to make it a lot safer, a lot more secure, and a lot more friendly for the community. So I actually think they did a great job putting this together, and add some challenges for me, but I'm definitely up for the challenges, and the community deserves it.
Any questions for the applicant?
Crock of shit.
And make sure that everybody's. Yeah.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Museo.
Don't, don't push that.
Like open the public hearing? Here again, anybody wish to comment on this? Keep it, you're in, put it three minutes, reward in three minutes, try and keep your comments fresh, stick to your opinion, and not repeat ourselves. Anybody have anything to first?
So that we have Bob?
Okay, by the way, Mr. Garnon, your microphone is pretty distant sounding, I don't know if it's very close to you or not, but.
Can you hear me better?
Not much.
Is your green light on first?
Yeah, my green light's on.
So I'll go ahead.
How's that, that's be a little bit better?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that to my attention.
All right. So in the agenda packet, page 76, item 17, regarding advertising, it restricts advertisement of cannabis products. I'd like to ask that you extend that to restrict all advertisement by companies engaging in cannabis business. I don't know if you've noticed, but on the back of Safeway store receipts, there are advertisements. They're not specific to products, but I'm pretty sure kids see those, and I might ask some questions, what that's all about. Also, how about saying, or how about having no kids' menu items for sale in the store? You know, we're talking about so-called adult use, right? So why can't you restrict gummy bears, vaping products, and other products targeting youth? The Public Health Institute has weighed in on this and recommends no flavored products for combustion or inhalation, no cannabis-infused beverages, and limit other products and packaging attractive to youth. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else like to comment?
I, at this point, don't see any hands, if somebody would like to comment, please raise your hand. If you're on the phone, hit star six to unmute yourself, star nine to raise your hand. I see no hands raised.
All right, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Well, I have a thing to say about the flavored products, it's a little late at this time to try to change the wording on flavors products because they're out there and they're legal, and there's nothing we can do about it at this stage. Why have to say?
It wouldn't surprise me if a lot of adults like the flavored products.
The adults definitely like flavored products, but kids, I'm, I see what Bob's point is. Kids see this chocolate little drop sitting on their parents' table, and they think it's candy. And so I understand that part of it, it's not where we are right here with this thing. I mean, we can't restrict the flavored products in these shops, we don't have that power.
Good point.
I feel that it's up to the adult, just like you don't leave a loaded 38 on your kitchen table. If there's something out there that kids shouldn't have, well, it should be up to the parents to prevent that from having them have access. And I think they can do that. It's like Ron says, there's no, it's a little bit too late to start deciding this factor. I mean, this is already part of the whole deal, you have to be careful with the product, any product, it could be detrimental, you have to use it right. And so, it's, I think it's up to the parents, the users, to restrict it, and make it safe. I agree with Ron on that.
Good points, gentlemen. Anybody else want to weigh in on this? No, I'm looking for a motion.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve with the findings and all 25 conditions.
You've moved to approve the use permit?
A second.
Motion by Commissioner Jensen, and second by Commissioner Richardson, enter discussion. Now, call for roll call vote.
Chairman Garnon?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Richardson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Jensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Gorseau?
Yes.
And Commissioner Anderson?
Very good. Sounds like you're in business at 1201 Mono Way, Mr. Museo. All right. Moving on. Item number five, an application by the Brockt House LLC for a development agreement amendment to allow the Brockt House LLC to sell medicinal and adult-use cannabis as permitted by state and local law. to allow the Brock House LLC to sell medicinal and adult use cannabis as permitted by state and local law. This location is for 10 Calaveras Street in a limited manufacturing ML zone. The assessed parcel number is 056090032. Staff.
Commissioners, Mary Rose, Rudy Conga, City Administrator with the City of Sonora. The staff is recommending that the Planning Commission adopt resolution 04-12-20-2021-B of Approval of Ordinance 879, approving the First Amendment to the Development Agreement between the City of Sonora and the Brock House LLC. As we just kind of went through the historical regulatory authority of the Planning Commission to allow for adult recreational cannabis. I will just look at what is significant with this First Amendment at this point. On August 5th, 2019, the City of Sonora adopted Ordinance 858, approving a development agreement between the City of Sonora and Brock House Farms LLC. This is a First Amendment to that development agreement allowing for recreational and adult use cannabis. This First Amendment is a little bit different than Hazy Bulldog. And with respect to Brock House, they have not quite fully opened operations yet at 10 Calaveras Street. So we put additional components into this First Amendment to address that the applicant is not fully operational yet at 10 Calaveras Street. So along with your recent item with your Hazy Bulldog, we have increased the public benefit fee. Once again, on this First Amendment from the original 10,000 or 5% up to the 12,500 or seven and a half percent. However, with this agreement, we are asking the applicant to begin payment of a public benefit fee beginning May 1st. And we did that in order for the applicant to show commitment to the City of Sonora that they are going to become fully operational with their development agreement. So regardless of whether or not they are up and running, they will be required to submit payment to the City of Sonora beginning May 1st. And that payment is the minimum of the 10,000 or 5%. Once they become fully operational, then their public benefit fee will shift to the 12,500 or seven and a half percent of total gross receipt. So that is the difference that you're seeing between the two retail establishment. This applicant will be required payment prior to fully operational status. We did also put a requirement that they must be operational within six months. Once again, addressing the commitment of the applicant to become fully operational within the City of Sonora. Beyond those two items, it's still governed within the same term of the original agreement. But once again, we wanted to make sure that we put that requirement on the applicant to become fully operational and committed to a retail establishment within the city. Yes, sir.
I've got a question for you, Mary Rose, on that. So with the public benefit payment that commences May 1st, would that be considered sort of an incentive for the applicant to go on ahead and do the renovations or remodeling on the building that we had taken action on a few years ago?
Exactly. We wanted to put conditions. They were looking to expand from the medicinal to recreational. In discussion with staff, with our attorneys, we wanted to put incentives to ensure that they were becoming fully operational based on the agreement that the city agreed to back in August of 2019. So they will be required for that payment starting May 1st, incentivizing them that they should become fully operationable because they will still be required to pay a public benefit fee regardless of whether or not they're operational. And we did put that six month clause in here as well to ensure that they become operational within six months where the development agreement will become null and void.
Yeah, because if I recall, we had a pretty involved discussion about the conditions of the building, historical aspect. It's gateway part to the southern part of Sonora's entrance. And that was coupled with a discussion about the concept of adopting a medicinal cannabis business.
We've had multiple discussions with the owner in regards to this, so they're fully aware of the requirement. And they understand the need to become operational as soon as possible.
I like that incentive personal. Any other questions for city manager? Thanks, Mary Rose.
So the applicant is Tom. I see a Tom on here. So Kim, I'm thinking that is our applicant. If you want to unmute him.
The applicant's here. Hi, can you hear us?
Yes.
All right. Sir, go on ahead. The commission's ready to listen to anything you have to propose to talk about.
Yeah, I was listening. I heard her say click over if you, I was here. I am. Everything that talked about, we've had a couple of different meetings. We're completely all on the same page and on board. Our plan is to be operational as soon as possible. Only thing we'll be waiting on is construction. But we've had all the permits and things of that nature, you know, applied for. And we're just waiting for those to go through and I mean, all the funding there to get this business up off the ground. And it should be a good success for all.
Great. Are there any questions of the applicant, the commission? If it's not, we'll move on to the public hearing. Thank you very much, Tom.
Thank you.
Again, ladies and gentlemen, give you up to three minutes apiece to go on ahead and address the commission. Please keep your comments fresh. First up.
Yeah, we have Bob with his hand up.
Okay, already. Thank you. In the agenda packet, page 80, finding C, will not be detrimental to the health, safety and general welfare. The City, the Sonora City Council and Planning Commission have heard from a broad range of people in our community opposed to recreational marijuana storefronts. This includes our Yosemite Community College District Board Member, our Superintendent of Schools, a school principal, four high school teachers, suicide prevention and social workers, a doctor, past and present county supervisors, local business owners, realtors, parents, grandparents, and even former drug addicts. They express their concern about how increasing the availability of marijuana will lead to increased youth access no matter how hard you try to regulate it. In Colorado, past month use by youth aged 12 to 17 increased by 30% since recreational marijuana legalization. Maybe that's why 80% of California municipalities ban recreational sales, the complete opposite of Prop 64 results. We say you can regulate storefronts in a way that prevents youth access and diminishes the black market. I say you are uninformed. Experience in Colorado, California shows the black market just grows bigger. The reason is simple. Easier community access gets more kids hooked. Once hooked, kids don't want to pay the high prices for regulated products. They just want it cheap and they don't care where it comes from. The black market is thriving in California. The city's pot tax increase from 5% to 7.5% will only add fuel to the black market. One of the more insidious products sold in recreational pot shops are gummy bear candies. Consuming a single laced gummy bear can have lifelong impacts on a young child. I've heard it said it's not about money, it's about freedom. The city's actions say otherwise. So far, the city hasn't even granted one penny of marijuana tax revenue to youth education. Even when you are receiving $900,000 in CARES Act funding. Prop 64, already legalized pot. So it's not about restricting freedom or creating prohibition. We are talking about truly effective restrictions to youth access. Please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Next up, someone like to address the commission on this.
So the phone number ending in 1626, you can go ahead. Dave, are you there? I think that's Dave Peters.
Am I unmuted now?
Yes, you are.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to make the same objection I made the last time in regards to Sonora and the atmosphere. The City Council supposedly was saying that they didn't want, excuse me, didn't want a shop at every entrance to Sonora, but that's exactly what we're getting. We're getting a historic building that's at the very entrance to Sonora on the south side. I expect, fully expect for the city to go ahead and pass other shops at the west and north entrances to the city. So we can complete our effort to become the pot center of the central Sierras. That's just really sad for me. It's sad for me to hear the gentleman say that he is basically giving up on having any kind of moral input into what's going on with the pot industry in our area. Especially when all of the people that work with children, all, all law enforcement, education and the general community are very sad and upset about this whole situation. But Sonora City Council and now the Planning Commission seem to just be going full blast ahead with their plans to destroy the city of Sonora. It's a sad thing to see. I've lived up here all my life. And I feel sad that people give up on the moral issues because it's already here. I'm not going to say a thing on the next issue because it'll be the same thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next up.
Anybody else would like to address the Planning Commission? Please raise your hand. If you're on the phone, use star nine. Star six to unmute yourself. Again, if you're on just the regular Zoom, you just need to raise your hand. Use the raise your hand feature. And at this point, I see no more raised hands.
All right, folks, I'll close the public hearing. Bring this back to the commission.
I have a question for Rochelle. On the building that we're looking at, that was the old foundry, right? There's, has to be some pretty serious changes in security on the building, right? That's happening. I didn't see a lot of that, but we're, how it was, but that's in the process. The windows are going to have to be changed.
So John, we'll be addressing that as part of the use permit.
Okay.
It's part of the conditions on what the building has to look like.
Yeah, that was my concern. Thank you.
No problem.
Commissioners, any other comments? If not, then I'm looking for a motion. Motion, motion to, this is resolution number 04122021-P, right? Correct. Motion to approve with the development agreement as due. Is there a second? Very good. Pushing by Kevin Anderson, second by John Anderson. Any other discussion? Call for the question. Do roll call.
Chairman Garton, Garton, sorry.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Richardson.
Yes.
Commissioner Jensen.
Yes.
Commissioner Corso.
No.
And Commissioner Anderson.
Yes. Thank you. Harry's four to one. Item number six, application by the Brock House LLC for a use permit to allow Brock House LLC to sell medicinal and adult use cannabis as permitted by state and local law. This location is for 10 Calaveras Street in a limited manufacturing ML zone. Assessor parcel number is 056090032. Staff.
Thank you. Yes, we do have an application. This is the second part to the development agreement and the requirements. Again, this is for a medicinal and adult use cannabis facility. The council adopted August 5, 2019, ordinance 5858, which was the medicinal cannabis dispensary approval for this site. And they are starting to move forward. There has been some delays along the way, but we have received their building permit plans. They have been going through initial comments and they do have some changes and they're working on those now so that they can get ready to get their building permits issued once, if approved by the, by the Planning Commission. The applicant or the location is in the ML zone, the limited manufacturing zone under section 17.60.040. Use permit is required for adult use and medicinal dispensaries within that zone. And they also have to be located, they can't be located closer than 600 feet from an existing school, youth center, daycare, church or park. And this location is not in, within 600 feet of any of those uses. Thus tonight, if the commissioners approve the use permit, the project would be consistent with the Sonora Municipal Code. And the ML zone is also consistent and the use is allowed under that zone is consistent with the general plan designation, which is light manufacturing ML. We, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail because Mary Rose did go into more detail on the history and its location. As we know, this site was the former foundry building. In fact, I used to go there with my dad when I was a little kid. And it's done, had other uses along the way. It's the last thing that it was, was a retail consignment type shop at that location. The city, there is a condition in there that they are going to request the parking within the front of the building. That area is actually in the city right away. And so we've included a condition that they worked on an agreement with the city to utilize that area for parking so that it can accommodate their accessibility parking as well as some additional spaces at the front of the building. They'll be working with the city administrator, the property owner and the property and the project applicant to secure that agreement between the city and the property owner. We did do all the public notification as we have on all these projects in the 300 feet. We did not receive any responses on this project prior to the meeting. So the conditions that are before you are the same standard conditions, but we have four conditions that we have added specific to this location. And the first one we've already talked about, and that's the requirement for parking. And the parking agreement with the city to provide for the additional parking needed for his ADA to have it right at the beginning of the building. The other thing, the next condition, which is condition number four, is the exterior building metal siding shall be similar to the existing look with vertical siding instead of horizontal siding. As you remember originally, when this came before the Planning Commission, they had horizontal metal siding on the building and they are, the Planning Commission condition that they have vertical siding. So it's similar to what's already on the building. And so that condition stands as it did back in 2019. And then minimum of two wine barrels. They have to have the trees along the front of it and they are limiting the removal of the windows. And those, we've, our staff has already reviewed the plan and the windows are, as they were, they, the same location that they are today. So we will work with, and they'll work with the community development director to coordinate the trees. We are requiring a minimum of two. That was what was required into the original project. And we added another condition just because of, there is some concern tied to the adult use as to part, what the parking requirements are, our needs are going to be on this project. There are eight parking spaces. That was what was. That was what was approved during the, uh, previously. Um, and we did add a condition that, um, we will monitor the, uh, vehicle parking during business operations. They are required to accommodate their parking on site or within the approved city right of way as part of their agreement. Um, and then, uh, we have talked to the property owner. They will add additional parking to the rear of the building if, um, additional parking spaces are needed. So we have had that, added that as a condition. So, um, I can answer any questions that you might have. The rest of the conditions are the same conditions that we have, um, on the previous application.
Anybody have questions for staff?
I was reading, uh, if, if they lose their medicinal license, they also lose their, or they stop selling medicinally, they cannot proceed.
So, uh, Nubia, do you want to address that or Mary Rose? I know that there, they do have the medicinal requirements, that they have to do both.
Right. That's correct. And the, and the, the purpose behind that is, as the committee commissioner knows, the whole program and the way that the operation was structured initially is that they were supposed to have medicinal. So, right now, their, um, their approvals are premised on operation of both medicinal and adult use. So if they do not keep that, uh, license intact and they only want to sell adult use, that will be a breach of their agreement. Um, and that is something that, uh, the parties can discuss in the future, but that's, any changes to that, but right now, that's the way it's structured.
That's correct, yeah.
And they would have to go through a state agency to get licensed for just adult use?
Yes, they, they have to both get, excuse me, licensure from the state for both for medicinal and adult. And that is a requirement, obviously, of the use as well, uh, uh, of the agreement and of the use. They have to have licensure from the state.
Right.
Thank you.
Any other questions to staff? If not, is the applicant here? Can you expand on anything that's already been said, sir?
Can you hear us, Tom?
Hello?
Hi, are you there?
Yes, I guess, yes.
Okay.
Just giving you an opportunity to address the commission on anything relative to this use permit, sir.
Um, like, guys are pretty much covering everything. We are gonna, we understand keeping the, uh, building its historical, uh, look. I mean, once it's all done and renovated, I mean, it's gonna be beautiful. It's gonna, you know, be back to, you know, the probably glory days of what, what it used to look like. We're gonna get all original like material, all the windows have already been ordered. Um, so it's gonna keep that look. We, and we're gonna make it a really good looking place and, you know, eyesore that it maybe once was. And also, uh, I saw you guys talk, you know, about, or about the parking. There is gonna be added parking in the rear. We're gonna have at least a minimum of twelve different spaces. We're gonna pour like a, a whole parking lot back there. So there'll be, with the parking in the front, there'll be plenty of parking for staff and, uh, customer patients coming through the day.
Any questions for, from the commission to the applicant? Thank you very much, Tom.
Thank you.
Well, now open the public hearing. Folks, please, as has been consistent with the rest of the public hearings in this meeting, just keep your comments to three minutes and, uh, keep them fresh. Who would like to speak first?
I think that was where he was speaking from. So five seven nine nine, Tom, is that your number? So the person with, uh, the last four, four digits of seven, uh, five seven nine nine. Can you address us, please? Is that Tom? Okay, I think that was him. It looked like it, so we'll ignore that one and we'll go to Bob has his hands raised.
Alrighty, thank you. I'd like to talk about finding one on page one oh one of the agenda packet. The use is not located within six hundred feet of a school, youth center, daycare, church, or park. So Tolmy County has their youth and family visitation center at one oh one Hospital Road. This is about two hundred feet away from the ten Calaveras Street location. It doesn't seem like a youth and family visitation center is compatible with a marijuana storefront business. Sure seems like a place where the damage caused by adverse childhood experiences known as ACES is being worked out. By the way, a leading cause of ACES is actually the children's parents smoking pot and doing drugs. I don't know when the county opened the center, but if you argue the twenty nineteen Brack House agreement predates the center, then that agreement should only be grandfathered to the original conditional use permit and not to the greatly expanded new conditional use permit. Finding two says the use is desirable at, at the specific location. Really? If you permit this use, then the first thing visitors will see when coming up South Washington Street from Highway one oh eight would be a nice big pot store with a big green plus symbol on it. I understand some people may like that. Others will certainly be turned off about Sonora. Page one oh eight, item seventeen, advertising restricts advertisement of cannabis products. How about extending this to restrict all advertisement by companies engaging in cannabis business? So, planning commission and Tom, how about saying no kid menu items for sale in your store? We're talking about so-called adult use, right? So why can't you restrict gummy bears, vaping products, and other products targeting youth? At the risk of repeating myself, the Public Health Institute recommends no flavored products for combustion or inhalation, no cannabis infused beverages, limit other products and packaging attractive to youth. Thank you, and please vote no.
Thank you for your comments. Someone else would like to address the commission?
I see, the only other one is the five seven, five seven nine nine. And I believe that was the nut line that he was, oh, he's done.
Well, yeah, uh, I was trying to unmute earlier, uh, when you were asking, yeah, this is my number, this is, uh, Tom, Johnny.
Okay. Okay, you can, um, lower your hand if you'd like, hit, just hit star nine again.
Hit star nine?
Is there anybody else I see?
Can, can I still, can you hear me still?
Yep, we're good, you're good. Yeah, we'll, we'll meet ya.
Okay, um.
Thank you. And at this point, I see no other hands raised. If you're on the phone, hit star nine if you want to raise your hand and star six to unmute yourself. Okay, I see nobody. So I think you're done.
Very good. I'll close the public hearing then. Bring it back to the commission.
So what's the story on this youth building two hundred feet from this building?
So a youth center is more, um, in line and Mary Rose, you, or Nubia can speak to that. It's, it's a youth center where you do kids' sports and you do kids' activities. It's not a more of a.
Yeah, so when we define youth center, youth center is generally just like Rochelle said, so with, that are engaging in youth activities, sports, after-school programs, um, open to the public for all youth to attend. Um, that's with the definition. And I, I'm not aware, sir, if, when the county opened up their facility at that location. Are you aware, Rochelle? So, yeah, we would have to look at what that was, but that would not fall into a line of what the definition from a staff perspective of what youth center would be. And Nubia, if you wanted to comment on any of that as well?
That's correct. That's all set in, um, the city's definition mirrors that of the state statute as well. And it is really meant to encapsulate what you would consider more of like after-school care, sports related, so not necessarily, it, it, I'm not familiar with this particular facility, but it sounds more of a, a health center of sorts, um, that's operated by the county. So that wouldn't, that wouldn't fall under that definition.
Any other comments or discussion? Commissioners?
No comment.
That, we'll entertain a motion.
One thing I would like to say, John made a point earlier that this is an adult cannabis sales and these adults, they all need to be responsible to their own children. And, uh, as my parents were and your parents were for you. There's always gonna be irresponsible parents, no matter what it is, like John said, with a gun or alcohol or whatever else. I mean, uh, this is beyond the point of no return as far as I'm concerned, and I'll make a motion if that's okay. And, uh, I'll say that we should, uh, recommend the passing of this resolution.
It's a use permit, right?
I just want to straight approve in the use permit. With the conditions.
I'll go ahead and second it based on going back to what Ron just said. This is a serious thing and it's an adult thing. And adults must be responsible for what's going down in their home and their family. And if they can't do that, well, then they can't allow their car to be driven by their kids that are sixteen. I mean, there's a, there's a line to be drawn where responsibility of the parent is out there. And with the situation as serious as it is, there's a lot of things are, this is where I go. It's up to the parents to be, they're gonna use this like alcohol, you don't leave your uh, Jack Daniels in, in the refrigerator at night. You have to be responsible. And that's what I'm going with, just like I think science will tell us how this all plays out. It may be great, it may help people sleep better, it may help people deal with pain. It may help, we'll find out. We don't know yet. But right now, responsibility of the parent is the key on all this. Amen.
So I just want a clarification. We're gonna have most, uh, conditions one through conditions twenty-eight or, um, through, I'm sorry.
That's what the inclusion of these highlighted things in this.
Inclusion of the four highlighted conditions that staff maybe.
Right.
Okay. Is that correct?
Yeah, so there was a motion by Commissioner Jensen. Did you second that, John?
Yes, I did.
Second by Commissioner Richardson. Any other discussion? If not, I'll call for the question. Roll call, please.
So we have Chairman Gornan.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Richardson.
Yes.
Commissioner Jensen.
Yes.
Commissioner Borso.
No.
And Commissioner Anderson.
Yes. Order one, motion carries. Very good. Thank you, and thanks for all your patience tonight. Community Development Director's report.
So, first of all, I would like to thank Ron Jensen for all the years that he has given to the city as a commissioner. Uh, the city council at the, uh, next meeting, which will be on, um, April nineteenth, will be, um, uh, reviewing applications. As you know, Ron has resigned, um, from the commission. And so, uh, there, we went ahead and advertised for all the positions because your two positions will also be up in July. Um, and so we did our annual at the same time. So we have a position just to complete Ron's term, which will start immediately upon appointment. So this would be his last meeting and then the other two positions wouldn't start. Um, whoever gets appointed for those, um, it doesn't go into effect till July. So, um, but we did it all at once just to make it easier and understandable for people. So, um, again, I wanted to thank Ron for everything. It's been a pleasure to work with you for.
My pleasure also, working with all of you.
Been our pleasure, Ron.
Good.
Yes, thanks for all your input.
You're welcome.
Think having a contractor was a really benefit.
You bet.
On the planning commission.
Yeah.
So it was really helpful and very helpful to staff on you.
Thank you. Very much.
And we have, um, right around eight applications that came in, so they'll be, uh, the mayor will be making a recommendation again on the nineteenth. So tonight at five o'clock, Will and Co. did their ribbon cutting ceremony. And none of us were there because we were all here. They're having a soft opening, so when I leave here, I know I'm gonna drive by. It's open or not. I think their official opening is tomorrow. Harbor Freight is going into the old Costuless Building. Um, I know they've submitted for their, their plans. Kim, have we got the, their plan check? Is it done on the? Yes. So they're under plan review, so, um, we'll have them get started here shortly. So that'll fill that shopping center back up. So, um, I would anticipate that we will have a main meeting, but, um, we shouldn't be talking about cannabis at that meeting. We should be moving on to other things, so, um, that will be nice for all of us. So, uh, I, that is, I think, all that I have for you guys tonight. But I did, again, wanted to thank Ron.
Uh, you've had eight applications for.
Planning commission.
All right, that's actually, I would consider that a pretty robust turnout for, and showing interest, public interest in what we do. I really appreciate those people stepping up.
Yeah, that's the most that since Ed's been gone that we've ever received that I'm aware of, so. Yep, so there, that's, we'll get that done and we'll move forward from there.
Ron, you've provided awesome service.
Thank you so much, everybody. It's been enjoyable for me too. Been a little stressful over the past couple of months in my life and this also. It's time to move on for me.
All right. Both being there's no other business, I moved to adjourn. Dinner is awaiting. You bet. Thank you very much, everybody.
See you later.